You're back on there.
Mary, I brought you a picture of you today and you're not here to see it.
Yeah.
I have a picture of Mary Batty.
We're recording.
All right.
Oh, are we?
Yep. All right, well, being in order, this is Holiday Island Advertising Promotion Commission Special Meeting, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at four P M. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, will you take the attendance?
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Elwood.
I'm here.
Chairman Holland.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawler.
Here.
Secretary Treasurer Lordowitz, here. Commissioner Plumley.
Here.
Commissioner Scroggins, excused absence. We have a forum, district chairman.
All right, moving on to the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We got a motion.
Sir.
And a second by Commissioner Brown. Secretary, you want to take a roll call now?
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Elwood.
Hi.
Chairman Holland.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lawler. Here.
Close enough.
Secretary Treasurer Lordowitz. Yes. Plumley.
Just, just, I make one comment. I'm not sure we need to have a roll call.
We did in the process of the format. The only one that I know is the adjournment of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, that's why I continued that way.
Okay, deal. I just had this thing to get for this to move an agenda.
Uh, there's no reports. And so we'll just move on to business, which is a discussion on review. We request the city council to change the city ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two zero. And, uh, Commissioner Brown, I'll, I'll give you the floor. That's your request of the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I requested this meeting because I'm looking at the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty right now. And, uh, section two of the ordinance says, and I'll just read part of it, but it says, "The levy of the three percent tax upon gross receipts of hotel motel, short-term rentals, and other accommodations if you exclusively advertise a promotion for the city of Holiday Island pursuant to the authority of Arkansas, under, quote, "so-and-so, so-and-so," along legal sight there. And, yeah. And, uh, the other, the reason I read that is the phrase "and other accommodations." So, here's the formal request from our chair to the mayor for the city council meeting, I think it's next week. And, uh, got on there, proposed changes to include additional categories of licenses. Uh, one is campground, two is the pool, three is the event center, which would be the ballroom, uh, four is the golf course, and five is the marina. I met with Rich Biggins yesterday. I went over to talk to Mike Maloney, who's the head of the CAPC, which is Eureka's AMP committee. And, uh, Rich was in, but Mike was not. But I talked to his two assistants there, secretaries. And, um, I asked them, uh, over there in Eureka, Eureka, uh, if they, uh, tax anything other than short-term rentals. That means overnight rental, somebody rents it, uh, B and B, uh, whatever apartment. And they said, "No." And we were in the basement of the auditorium, and I said, "What about the building upstairs?" Which would be like our ball, "No." None other than apartments and, uh, houses that are stayed in overnight or less than long-term. So, what I think, and I talked to Rich about this, and he had some thoughts. He had to close on his house today. He bought a home here in Holiday Island, uh, very near. Uh, and, uh, they're closing at right now as we speak at four P M. So he said, "I can't be there." But he would be in agreement with adding a campground because that is a place where RVs stay and you stay overnight, just like a hotel motel or an apartment. But the pool, uh, the event center, which is the ballroom.
And the barn. And the barn.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the bar, uh, event center would be a bar too, I'm sorry. And golf course and marina. I also called Colin Paul and talked about the marina. And, uh, he said that, well, first of all, go back to the two ladies that I talked to in, uh, CAPC. Uh, they said, "We don't have any campgrounds because Wanderlust is outside of the city of Holiday, uh, Eureka Springs." And one that Lawrence Blood used to own, uh, going to where the, off of the Ozarks, the Green Tree, that's also out of the city. So there are no campgrounds.
Kettle? Kettle?
Kettle?
Yeah.
For Barryfield, I think.
Kettle campground.
Oh, I don't know, but, yeah.
Kettle.
Uh, that's true. Kettle would be, but anyway, the two that I thought of were there, but, uh, she didn't think, neither two ladies thought that they had one, but kettle is right in the middle of town. At any rate, uh, that would be in line with what we've asked for, number one, double A. But in talking to, uh, Colin Paul, he's our manager of our, uh, marina. We own it. HISAID owns it. He's got a seven-year contract on him managing it. And, uh, so what I thought would happen was that if he rented a boat, a kayak, a canoe, a jet ski, anything like that, other than the slip rentals, there would be a three percent tax. Am I correct on that?
No, you're not. There's nothing in there.
All right, I'll, I'll stand corrected on it, but I had to do quick homework. And, uh, but my question is, on the pool, and, and it seems as though what we're doing is we're asking the city council, we're, we're asking to do their work. By that, I mean, the city council is the ones that are getting business licenses, and they're doing a good job. And there was a letter from the mayor a few days ago, thank you for that, about, in the last meeting, I guess, about business licenses, who had applied, who had not applied, uh, when they're going to apply, and so forth. Uh, and I don't think having a pool, uh, the event center, which would be the bar and the ballroom, the golf course, and marina would be, I don't think we should ask them, I don't know about a business license, but for them to collect taxes.
They're not collecting taxes, Jim.
All right, well, the, the reason I got on this committee was to collect money so that we can do what AMP committees do. And, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Peggy has pointed out very clearly what we could do in the chair, uh, of what we could do with that money. So, uh, but I think, and the biggest reason I asked for the meeting, as we said at the beginning, right away, we said, "We are not going to ask in our forum that we have forums, plural, the meetings that we're going to have to sell us on November fifth, uh, we are not going to ask the local residents, everybody in here just right now, uh, everybody, to pay any of this tax." We said that, and I think we said it several times in a meeting. It's on tape. Oh, I said it? I know I said it. Uh, and that would be a good reason for me, as a member of this committee, to go out and try to get everybody to get fifty-one percent of that vote. This could be a tough vote, but I think it's going to be even tougher if we are adding things, proposed changes, uh, to include additional categories of licenses. Okay, you're saying that it's not a three percent tax, but then why are we in the business then of asking these four other, five other groups, marina and so forth, to have license? Why doesn't the city council do that? The city?
The city council will do that. We're asking the city council to look at that. We've got, now, first of all, we're in charge of collecting taxes, and, and I'll let these guys talk. They put it. But we're asking the city council to put these categories to make it easier for us to determine if the campground's going to be subject to tax. The pool won't. The event center would, potentially. We're talking about the, the golf course won't, and marina won't. But we're going to be advertising for all of them. So we're asking them to get a permit. We're not asking them to pay taxes. We can't change the way the referendum is. If, that's the way it is. We can't change that. It is what it is. Six oh two is what it is. We don't have any say on that. But we're, we're just asking them to make it easier for us. If, if we don't have these separate, in my opinion, if we don't have these separate categories or, or business licenses, how does the AMP committee know which ones to expect to pay three percent and which ones won't? Their bookkeeping at, at HISAID wouldn't, we're not going to go through HISAID's books and say, you know, "This part of the thing goes here and this part..." They're going to have to do that if we have separate license for each one of those categories. But the, the pool and the golf course and the marina, the three percent doesn't apply to them.
Let's say all of these five right here, and I think there's six, if we add the event center, would be the bar and the.
And, yeah, and the, and the island room.
I think it depends on how they want to do it. If the restaurant itself is actually booking the event, it's going to be a restaurant. Let's take them all, the island room, the bar, and the ballroom, and the, uh, I'd like to call it community center. It's not really the type to call, but that's what the name is on the building. Okay, so I go up there tomorrow morning. I'm a citizen, and I pay forty-five dollars for a round of golf. And I run, "No, just, okay, let me, okay, it's forty, fifty, fifty-five."
It doesn't matter what it is.
It's, I, I know it's forty-five, okay? So it's forty-five dollars. Is Lauren, the manager of the golf course, if we, if he gets a license, okay? A business license for the golf course, brochure, is he ever going to be asking me for forty-five dollars to pay three percent more to the AMP?
No.
No, golf is not a qualified action in the AMP statute, so we'll go back to the AMP statute.
Okay, let me ask another thing. Which of these things would we be getting any money on, other than the campground?
I can, I can answer that one for you if you want me to, real quick. Uh, i- i- and since we looked at it, there was the restaurant and meeting rooms. And so this is the HISAID budget financials that are online that we pulled off. And in that, they have rental facilities, short-term. So that is all the ballroom bookings. They consider it short-term rentals. If we go to recreation center, they also have a line in their rental facilities, short-term. So that's all their parties that they book for the pool. And if we go to the campground, they have not only long-term rentals, but they have short-term rentals, defining the difference between the Arkansas tourism tax.
But you know how many nights the bar has rented? I know because I was president for five years. And this fellow next to me knows because he and his wife are chairmen of the president now. It's very, very seldom. Same with the island room. Two years in a row, the island room has been used to entrance to the pool because they tore down the rec center.
But that's because there's been no publicity for them. No one's promoting them, and that's part of what the AMP wants to be able to do, so that it stays open longer and more people can enjoy the facilities.
Well, some of our employees in the past have been very much promoting. His name was Barry Story. He was a golf pro. He went over to Eureka and went to every business and gave golf cards, rat cards. And so if you have the employee that wants to do that and will do it, uh, somebody even mentioned, "Why don't you offer a commission? If they rent the ballroom thirty times a year for five hundred dollars, why don't you give them a ten percent commission as an employee?" Or do you want, it's been brought up about wedding coordinator. Hire a wedding coordinator and give them first gifts at the ballroom or any other building they want. And we talked about how to get more money income. You know, there was just a big cut in the budget because we were way over budget at HISAID. And so we're not looking to, we're looking at bringing more money in, not paying more money out.
Well, yeah, but what are the AMP commissions?
And the tax is a, is a pass-through tax. It's the buyer that's paying the tax, not, not the city, not the businesses, or the Airbnbs, or anybody else. It is the user tax.
But I'm the user. I just described a golf round, forty-five dollars. I'm the user, and I live here.
But that doesn't apply to the three percent.
You won't have to pay that three percent.
That doesn't apply to, that doesn't apply to that.
Three percent don't apply to that. It don't apply to the round of golf.
I, I guess, let's, let's do this. Secretary, will you read, um, twenty-six dash seventy-five dash six oh two, C one, A, and B? If you don't have it pulled up, you can read that one. Yep.
The tax authorized in this section shall be upon any one or more of the following, as specified in the levying ordinance. The gross receipts or gross proceeds from renting, leasing, or furnishing hotel motel, house cabin, bed and breakfast, campground, condominium, or other similar rental accommodations for sleeping, meeting, or party room facilities for profit in the city or town. B subsection C one A of this section does not include the rental or lease of accommodations described in the subsection C one A of this section for a period of thirty days or more.
Okay, did we not, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, did we not take away, uh, we were going to charge restaurants one percent?
That's correct. That is, C, C two is the part for the restaurants, which we cut out.
But we killed that.
But answer the question. We, we eliminated that, did we not?
That's correct.
We didn't. The city council.
The city council did eliminate that. We suggested as a past AMP ad hoc committee.
Remember that. Right. So, uh, let's go back then to the golf operations. Are you saying that that was a diner up there, the restaurant?
Um, I mean, it, depending on what is going on, I think that's what the breakup of the license needs to be. Having the golf course on there doesn't mean that they're going to be an AMP taxpayer. We're going to have to decide who is, who is actually marketing and selling the event room. Is it the restaurant, or is it the golf? That's two different operations.
No, it's HISAID. HISAID owns the ballroom. HISAID, uh.
HISAID owns the properties, and they have those, but their operations, their front-of-house operations are completely different. One is a golf course.
And we hire people to do that.
And one is a restaurant. And so those are two different operations. The, the restaurant pays sales tax on food. They also pay alcohol tax on beer.
Right.
Golf doesn't pay alcohol tax. That's separate. They wouldn't pay that part. It, it's no different for this. It's the same for the campground. If we're going to limit out the campground to a certain license, wouldn't you want the license to be different?
And I went to our district manager to get his ideas on it. And he feels the only one that we should be requiring or asking for additional category would be the campground. Because they stay overnight. They come in an RV. They come in a trailer. They stay overnight, and they pay X dollars. That's like staying at one of your, uh, apartments in your homes.
They, they should pay the AMP tax.
They will. And they're, we've always known that that's going to be.
But the campground and your buildings, your homes, seem to be more of what we're about than these other things.
Look, we're not charging that, on, on those other things. There's no AMP tax on, on the pool or the golf course or the marina. There's no AMP tax associated.
The all generals have to get a business license for all that.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I would, I'd like to correct you because I did say recreation center, that they had rentals facility, short-term. And so that would classify in that category.
I know that, but what I'm saying.
Normal pool usage would not be one of those things.
What, what, asking them to get a, to be classified and get a business license is not asking them to pay an A, to be subject to an AMP tax. We don't have the authority to do that if we wanted to, and it doesn't subject them to an AMP tax just because they get a business license.
Well, the chair just said short-term rental. Could be an evening rental of a wedding reception.
That's correct.
That's correct.
I believe that is part of the law.
They would pay it.
That, that is correct. That, that is a short-term rental.
If the pool rents out the whole facility, yeah, then it would be.
That's right.
And the ballroom for a wedding reception.
That's correct. I think that is what is taxed, not the other activities are taxed.
So one thing you're saying, "No, we're not going to tax," but you just said, "Yeah, for a wedding reception in the ballroom, that's a short-term rental. Six, eight hours overnight," but not overnight. They never have people sleeping in the ballroom, okay?
And I'll, I'll remind them, the C one A, it never says overnight necessarily in those accommodations. It's accommodations for less than thirty days. The only exemption is if it's over thirty-one days, like the campground has some RV people that stay over thirty-one days. They would not pay AMP tax. They would be exempt from that.
All right.
They're not the short-term rental.
The, the bottom line is this. The commission has no, "We cannot change what this referendum is, and we cannot change what six oh two says."
But we could say, "Not under other accommodations, we could not say this." We could probably not send this to the city council. We did, under zero twenty, twenty.
We, we did to be able to list out the types of business license that some would have a AMP tax. The, the goal is to not have to give an AMP tax to every business license because we don't know what they do. The classification of what they do would give them the business license and the AMP permit that would allow that, that connection to happen.
Well, how does pool, and I'm not being discovered about this. I'm trying to understand. And if I understand when we leave here tonight, I'll be very happy because I know I'm not a cop for God. But how will the pool come into play other, and we can't even ask the public to go to the pool, by the way. It's a private pool. We have no lifeguards. We don't have to have lifeguards. You have to buy a hundred dollar permit for a year, or five bucks a day, or whatever it is. We spend hours on that stuff. Okay, so if I'm, if I'm from Berryville and I want to come use our pool, "Oh, I heard about it on your, with your advertising. It's beautiful." "Oh, I'm sorry, you can't get in because it lives in Berryville, Arkansas, not Holiday Island." So why is that even, so you got a license. You got a business license. They pay X dollars for it right here in this office. But I don't know why, maybe some of you.
Go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
You got to be.
If you would just state your name and everything for the stream.
I will. Lyth Graves, twenty-nine Tagawatt Drive. And I, actually, I think there's an issue with both of your, your ideas here. Uh, only the small pool is offered for rental. The big pool is not offered to the public for rental. And maybe should not be subject to an AMP tax because of that. The small pool is available for anybody to rental. And it's possible, in my mind, that it's because it's a small pool and it's really hard for a person to drown in there, especially if they're an adult, that it's not going to be a problem if it's, if it's not ADA compliant and all that kind of stuff.
Is it for birthday parties and things?
Yeah, it's for birthday parties and events, maybe a wedding reception. They want to be around the pool. I, I could be used for anything. Family reunion, I'm just, you know.
And I think you're right. I think the pool, though, is a full pool complex. License covers the whole part, whether it's a small pool or the big pool. That we're talking about is the pool complex to begin with. One license would encompass the whole property for that.
It could, yeah.
So that's what would typically happen, whether it's a golf course.
Although I can't see anything else being applicable, it's set, um, with a small pool and the pavilion.
Yep.
They would take care of that too, and the island room. All those would be taken care of at the rec center, I'm sure. I don't know, maybe.
I, I guess, let me give you an example that's close to this.
And the barn. They take care of the barn also.
The barn?
Yeah.
Um, the barbecue thing that we issued the grant funding on is renting from the rec center. Should we not collect AMP tax from an event that's going on? That's specifically what it says, that we collect tax on events and party rooms and facilities.
Well, yeah, I personally think that events are something, if we could have more events for HISAID, bringing in outside people to use our facilities. First of all, they get to see Holiday Island because they have to drive all the way to the barn. And we need to be renting those facilities. They're sitting vacant ninety-five percent of the time when they could be used for stuff. And that would bring extra money into HISAID, and it, and so what if they have to pay an extra three percent on top of it? It's, it's mostly outside people paying, not inside residents. That's my business.
I guess that, that's the question. Would be contributing to the AMP.
I want to ask, and, and I'm going to bring this up, and I'm fully prepared for everybody telling me I'm crazy as a limb because it would not be the first time. But I'm going to go to C one under six oh two, the last sentence, when it says, "For sleeping, meeting, or party facilities for profit in the city or town." I got a bizarre, and you got an answer for it.
I got one for you.
But I want to get it out, and then we're going to say that when they rent those facilities, there's two categories of renters. There's residents, and they pay this fee. There's non-residents, and they pay that fee. There's organizations that are seventy percent residents, and they pay this fee. And there's non-residents or organizations that do not comply with seventy percent, and they pay that fee. Those things are all rented not for profit because part of the running of those things is my assessment. So I'm saying, is that ambiguous enough that we can say, "When a resident rents the ballroom," I, don't shake your head until I'm done.
I'm with you.
I think you're, you're telling me I'm nuts.
No.
It's ambiguous for a profit in the city. Whether he makes a profit on his stuff or not, it doesn't matter. He's renting them with the thought of having a profit. When they're renting that ballroom to me, they know it's for cost because I'm a resident. When a resident rent it to somebody from Berryville, it's for a profit, even if it isn't in a profit.
So, so let me, let me, let me ask you this question to that.
I don't know.
When I see the word "for profit," and I thought you were going to go in the direction of a, a company being non-profit or profit.
No, no, no. I don't have any renting it.
But it definitely says for profit, and I believe that that word "profit" means that as soon as you collect a dollar, that is for some type of profit.
There is no definition of profit that would ever include when you collect a dollar.
Then it would be a donation at that point in time if it was not collected as profit as a dollar.
No, they're renting it to me because I'm a member here, and it's an amenity.
Do you, do you pay money for that rental, though, outside of the AMP?
I, I pay a different cost than somebody that they're renting out to the general public because part of my assessment goes for paying that. And I'm saying, "They're renting it to me not for profit. They're renting it to me just to break even as an amenity." They're renting it to Peggy for a profit.
I have a question, though.
Yeah.
We are already beginning on the newest ads to talk about law, um, campground, event space, and whatever, okay? We are beginning to encourage people to rent our facilities already before we even get the tax because, uh, Eureka is like nine months out, okay? We could keep those folks either in Eureka or here. Instead of them leaving because there's no facilities, they could rent our facilities right away, like next week. Okay, we want each of those cost centers to make a profit. That will help Holiday Island suburban. Their, your AOBs will go to other things because our AMP commission, the profit that we make here, is usable then for HISAID. So we want every single place to make a profit.
Well, I know we want them to, but we don't.
And we can do that with the promoting of the facilities and actually renting them out more often.
I, I don't know what that has to do with my argument.
Well, what I'm saying is these things should be profit centers.
I got one, I got one big issue. You're missing, you're missing my point, I think, but.
Oh, you, you want to say your name?
Ten Mills, Twenty Rocky Top Circle. This is premature, and you got, the reason the committee was formed was to promote the AMP tax and get it on the ballot and get it passed. And if you start, start nitpicking and adding stuff to this, the bluebirds are going to have a wonderful time with it. I guarantee you. And this is not a slam dunk election. You, it's, it's going to be very difficult because they're talking about it as a tax. They're not going to realize that it doesn't affect them. But if you start putting in on a whole bunch of my rate or different things, and when we sent the petition to the county, we said net overnight nightly rentals and a campground. There was nothing about all this other stuff.
Yes, there is. It's in six oh two. It's in the statutes.
It's not on the, it's not what to the ballot.
It's in six oh two in the statute. It says, advertise it under twenty-six seventy-five six oh one. Six oh one is what we're talking about.
I remember looking at the issue. I'm, I'm just saying you're making a mistake.
No, no, I, I'm, your, your point's well-taken. I understand. But we also charge with, with collecting this tax.
You can do that if it passes.
I know we can, but we have to have the procedures in place before it passes.
I'm telling you what you're going to set off.
I, I think that we have two issues here with this, and the time is definitely one of those. That we are now at a point where we had business license that were supposed to all be done before July first. We're in August, and it's still not done.
We spent two years working that damn business license, and I'm not going back on it anymore.
Well, we're, we're at the point, we're at the same point, that if, if, I think the issue comes from, if there's a tax in place.
Well, if you're going to issue a business license to the district, you issue one.
Well, if you're gonna issue a business license to the district, you issue one, it's a resort. You're not gonna, why go out, you're talking about four or five different business licenses for the same entity.
Well, it's to make it easier for them to-
I don't care about them.
Well, sometime we're gonna have to.
Maybe, maybe not.
Go ahead.
Can I further confuse the issue?
Oh, sure.
Barb Coon, fifty-two Allen Drive. All right. I'm gonna admonish this commission like I admonish us the board of commissioners. Our amenities are not profit centered, and never will be. Whatever we collect, however we try to get outside people in, we are never gonna make up the money that it costs to have these amenities. They are part of our assessments. If we're going to start making the Sid have a business license, multiple business licenses, whatever little profit we make from letting outside people come in, if you're gonna suck it up, they're gonna have to pay a business fee. They are not a business, they are a government entity. And all we're trying to do is satisfy all of our property owners who are tired of paying for amenities, by coming up with all kinds of fees to use the amenities. That impacts our residents, our property owners, and people non-property owners. We can't do this right now. I'm totally against having the Sid have a business license, so that we can figure out whether or not we can charge them three percent tax. Totally against it. And I reckon, this gets around, there is not one person here in Holiday Island who is well worth for that tax, because now you're impacting me, and not just tourists coming in paying that tax.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, Barb, I have one last question, that's on the pool. If we were to, if they got a, not, I'm sorry, not the pool, the Marina. And the Marina probably would benefit from advertising Peggy more than just by anybody. And I think Colin mentioned it, although he pays quite a bit of money for billboards and other advertising on his money that he makes for managing Marina. But what would, no, they have a restaurant down there, I think he sells pizzas, and I've lived some down there. It's not a full-fledged restaurant, but we're not charging restaurant one percent anyway, so that's off the table. But what, if he were to get a license, like we've asked the council to do, if he were to get a license, Colin talked through High Sid or the Marina, later on, as it says here, and other additional, what could we, would he pay anything at the Marina, one penny? Sort of tax?
No, because it's not included in twenty-six seventy-five six oh one. We can't change the law here. This is what the referendum is gonna be, and this is what the state statute. We have no authority to make any changes to either one of those things.
Why did we add these five in? Why did we do that? What is the bottom line of why we did that? And this council has to approve it, by the way.
You wanna answer that question?
I think it was to show that there's a diverse difference between the different parts of the Sid across different areas. And the business license says that we give a business license for each brick and mortar location. They are separate, even though they're the same entity. If we had two McDonald's here, we would issue two McDonald's licenses by that. So the issue was, given the example of what was there, to have a business license on, so that we can classify them correctly as giving an AMP permit. That's the reason they showed up in the list, not the taxing. There's a second page there that shows what would and why it's in the list, and the Marina did not include the conclusion of giving an AMP tax.
Right now, there's one thing, the council may not approve that anyway.
Right.
I'm not sure we need to even go there at the moment. But the questions still come up. When we're gonna have our meetings, and people are gonna ask, if somebody reads this, they'll say, doesn't that mean that Ha Ha and Friends of the Barn, and me renting the island room, or the barn, or whatever, gonna have to pay a three percent tax? That's why I brought up my argument, that maybe we could come up with a way that would eliminate residents from ever paying the three percent tax, even though that's not very much.
Well, if you do that, then you have to include my business on it.
Why?
If you have to rent one of mine local, being a local, you have to. I believe in an even playing ground.
No, I do-
I think we're having this issue too. I think the idea-
If I had to do it, I would feel obligated to myself to do it for mine.
I would understand that the part that's being made about the parts that are being there, and I understand-
You have to agree also.
Yes.
That the issue of, the idea of taxing the ballroom and stuff, and local people using it. But I want to be very clear, the law clearly states that those are a tax part of this law, and did not bring this issue up right now, and let people pass that, and then bring up the issue, I think is not showing very much transparency to the people of what they voted on. So I would much rather get this out of the way, and this vote lose, because we're talking about it right now, than give them a different idea, and come back to it, and say, well, the ballroom is now going to be taxed with AMP tax, or the barn is going to be taxed. The law's very clear. There's no way that I can get around that. No way any of us can. And I think as we read on down in that part, enforcement is not a choice. And I think that's the issue that we come through, is enforcement on these things is not a choice that we get to make. Yes, there are some choices done with other parts where the business license is being given out and delayed, but the tax law does not allow us to pick and choose who will pay tax and who doesn't.
Wait a minute. I don't agree with that. We cannot, enforcement is not an option, but interpretation always is when you have an ambiguity. That's a different legal question. I'm saying, it's rented to me as an amenity, because I'm a resident. That's why the fees are different. That's why my rental costs less than her rental costs.
Yep.
Because once to the public for a profit, once to an amenity owner, not for a profit. That's all I'm saying. I don't know that we can resolve that today. I'm just saying, an interpretation of an ambiguity in a law is not the same as, we don't have the authority not to enforce it. We do have the authority to interpret an ambiguity. And that's all I'm saying. I'm trying to come up with a way, with Ken's objection, some of the residents' objection, because we, I don't know if we told him, but we did, we didn't tell a hundred percent of the truth, but no resident will ever pay this tax. Yeah, there are some circumstances where they would. Because I've rented things for my family to come in for a weekend, and I would have to pay it. But I'm just saying, I don't know if we can do anything about that today. I'm just saying, to me, it's a little bit ambiguous, and High Sid being a unique situation, where that's an amenity for me, that's why I get it at a discount, where it's not an amenity to the outside people, where they're renting it with the hope, or trying to make a profit. I don't think this is that, I think it's ambiguous on that point, and we have that argument, but that's a collection issue. We can't change anything in this, and we can't change anything in six oh one. We don't have the authority to do that. I'm not even sure we have the authority to do what I'm suggesting, which is say, oh, but that's not a rental, as covered under six oh one, because that's an amenity that they're giving them for the cost of utilities. I don't know if we have that authority either, but that's an interpretation, and we're in charge of collection of taxes, or maybe we do that there. I don't know.
I'll make another comment.
Go ahead.
Linda Graves, twenty-nine table rock.
You can tell me I'm crazy.
No, you're not. And I understand exactly what you're saying here, because I rent rooms out there myself. And, but, you know, definitely High Sid has the right to set prices, the fees, the way they want to set them, depending upon, you know, it's a resident versus a non-resident, or a property owner versus non-property owner, I should say. So I think those are very valid things, and we should set the prices that way. So, and they could set the prices, I think, I'm not sure, but I think they could set the prices a flat rate, and then take out the proper percentage to send to the AMP commission. So it's kind of invisible.
Well, a lot of it, this is gonna be up to them, and how they deal with it if it passes.
Yeah, that's true. Also, as far as the Marina goes, yeah, they don't have anything rentable.
No.
Falling under this statute.
That would fall under the statute.
But he would have to have a business license under this statute. But it's not one that Rich would obtain for him. He's the business owner. He's just leasing property.
His situation's a bit different than the other amenities, yes.
Yes, definitely. But he owns the business himself, he has his own point-of-sale system. We don't get involved with that at all. And speaking of point-of-sale systems, also this business about multiple locations for the business licenses. The, if it's by multiple location, the clubhouse should be one location, not have multiple licenses, even though there's a restaurant and a pro shop there. They share the same point-of-sale system, in fact. So they're gonna have to collect their sales tax, and whatever else they do. And if they are doing the ballroom rentals-
They are now.
Which they do now, I assume they put that into their point-of-sale system. So, but, I mean, how can you tell whether the person at the register is working for the golf pro shop at the moment, or the restaurant for the moment? They kind of share responsibilities. There's a lot of fluidity there. And, but, you know, and I don't even believe, it should be, I think it should be a single person in High Sid renting all the facilities, myself. That makes way more sense than splitting it.
It does.
Only one of us is on the commission.
I mean, they could sit at the district office and do it. The lady at the front desk could be doing it, you know?
That's true.
So, I mean, I think it could be done, probably in a better way. But, anyway, you know, I think it needs to be by location, because that's what the statute says, that's the easiest way to implement it. It solves everybody's problem, basically. And, yeah, I think it's, you know, when residents rent it for a lower level of rent, the barn, or the ballroom, or whatever it is, or it's an organization renting it, then we need to feel like, I mean, this should be embedded in us, thinking, this is going to Holiday Island. It's not going to the state, it's not going to the county, it's not going someplace else. It is going into our pot of money that we are using for our purposes, and it's being spent by our residents. Wisely, I hope. So, you know, why should we resist paying it? It's supporting us, it's improving Holiday Island.
I'm personally not resisting paying. I'm worried about passing this. That's the thing that matters. The three percent, if people think about it, and how seldom most people rent any facilities here, really doesn't, shouldn't matter. But the fact that residents are gonna be paying part of this, that would matter to the vote.
Residents, yeah, part of their dues to Ha Ha, part of their dues to Rotary, maybe going for a rental. I'm not gonna, I'm certainly not gonna object to it, and I don't think most people in those organizations would object to something that is benefiting Holiday Island.
No, it's the same thing that I brought up in city council about the one percent on restaurants. It's not like it's much money that it makes any difference. It's, what effect does it have on the likelihood of this passing?
Yeah.
Right now, our, our, our biggest issue is, if this doesn't pass, we don't have a job here. So my only concern is-
And, yeah, if you want, if you want to postpone it, if you can postpone it to lack of the vote, I mean, is there a good reason to do it before the vote?
I think the limitation came down to, if there were business licenses needed, in the process that we've seen in the current business license part, and the collection started in March, not enough time to get those put in place to actually have collection happen, before enforcement of the tax itself would come into play.
But can't you do that between November and April, when you expect to start collecting?
I would expect to be good, but it is also, although, like I said earlier, the transparency of what's going to happen, and make sure that that's put in place in front of the voters, whether or not it's there or not, I think is a clear part to have, right? And letting them know what that tax collection is going to be. Instead of leaving it just to the Airbnb short-term rentals, and then come back in November and say it's also the ballroom and other event rental areas. So as a part of that, that was, it's definitely there. The question is, in what part is it there?
Well, Mr. Chair, I wanted to, I think I'm not supposed to have an agreement here. And that is, Rich Figgins yesterday said, well, why can't we, let's say it's two hundred dollars for the bar, why can't we just put three percent on it, which is six bucks, right? Why don't we charge two-ten? Two-ten, and then it's included in the rental.
Yeah.
Well, that's what everybody's gonna do.
Yeah.
That's what everybody will do anyway. That's what he's gonna do.
Not what we would, but, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and he said-
And then at the end, you just back it out?
Yeah. They're not gonna worry about six bucks, and they get the bar for two-ten. But, and then, he said, well, let me think about that. So he feels that there's a way that we can do this and make it work, but it's more complex when you have a Sid, rather than Eureka Springs, with a city, or Berryville, or whatever. But we can do it. The other thing is, I don't have, I don't think we're gonna, and Linda, I think you and Barb and Ken are right, that amenities confuse us, that confuses it. But I agree with what Peggy's done, and everybody around the commission, the council, rather, and the chair. We're doing this to improve Holiday Island. We need more people here. There are twenty-eight houses right now, that some of them are selling, but it's longer selling period, okay? You know, we have realtors that'll agree with me on that. But when you see all the things that we have here, they come for the barbecue, they come for the pool parties at every night, they come to golf. That's why they want to be here. And my wife and I came in eighteen years ago, and looked around at Holiday Island, right? Said, this is where I want to be. And she's not even a golfer. But the other day, when I voted aye, yes, and I still would vote aye on it, but I had some family issues, and a pet issue, about splitting down and so forth. And it wasn't really, my mind wasn't really clear on it, okay? So I think that if the council, city council passes it, our key, as Pat said, is to get this passed right here. And we wouldn't be, if I went to a forum over at the pavilion, and I say, we are not gonna tax locals, you know, I think I could say that with a straight face, I'm not lying to anybody, because I don't lie. But I think we can use the law that the chair has mentioned. Could we wait a little bit on this? I don't know. But if we have to do it, if they have to pay business licenses, then, but I guess I've been confused as to which ones pay, and which ones don't. And I guess the answer is, Pat, you made it pretty clear, that they have to have a business license, and they are supporting getting more money in, even though it's not maybe from the pool, or the Marina, but it's that they are agreeing that we need to promote Holiday Island as much as possible. Part of the problem, and those of you who have been for a while, Linda and I have, and the lawsuit about ten years ago, limited our ability to advertise. If we had not had that limitation, we might not even be looking at our AMP commission tax, or commission. But we need more than that. It was two percent. We need more than that to really go out and do a good job. And-
Let me ask a question, because we've got two city council members here, and I think Ken, does the Sid have just one business license now that we're asking them to get?
It would have to be by location, based upon the current lighting of the, of the, we're asking every business owner.
That's gonna impact us, but it's actually a separate issue. It's an issue for city council, not for us.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can't remember, did we ask them to get one, but we were asking them to get a business license for every part?
We haven't asked Sid to do anything yet, but they would, they would have to be by location, they're running the businesses, different businesses at different locations.
Because the other thing, I was, but, I mean, I work for a large company, you work for a large company. The idea that we have some, a company that owns lots of different things, and some of them are subject to this tax, and some of them, that's a bookkeeping issue. That's not a, that just, you know, that doesn't matter.
Just come on up and say your name.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm trying to monopolize it.
What are you used to?
Hi, my name's Bob De Souza, I live on thirty-one Bandy Drive. I've been coming down here for forty-two years. We have two properties on the island. Bill Schrader, he lives on Buckskin, right next to Randy, and I live on thirty-one Bandy, right at Lakeside. I guess, a number one question, it seems like you're able to talk back and forth. Someplace you go, and you get three minutes, and you sit down, and we'll be solved.
We don't hate each other. There's a couple of friends here who know.
What is this- What, what is this group, either planning and, what is it, the AMP?
This is AMP, that's all we have.
Okay, that's all we have. So, what is your group trying to accomplish relative to raising money? How much money do you need? Have you determined that? What's your target?
We forecasted based on short-term rentals.
What's that number? What do you?
It was about $200,000 for after March for 12 months because it's gonna take us a while to get that money.
So you're looking to get $100,000 to support your advertising and promotion?
Right, to start with.
Going, okay.
Right.
All right. And you're looking to get that money through taxes?
Through the 3% on short-term rentals.
On short-term rentals.
And it has to be used principally for promotion and advertising of the city.
So, what about some of the larger entities who have businesses here, like the restaurant, Sunfest, Dollar Fest? There's a couple of businesses over there, the tattoo place. Do you go to them and solicit money for advertising?
They do advertise with the chain.
And they pay for their advertising, okay.
They pay individually for their advertising, yes, sir.
Okay, so enough of that. Initially, Holiday Island, the big draw was come, visit, play, and stay. Those are the most important people here, believe it or not, not just the property owners. It's the people, the tourists. So I don't know if the approach, looking to get the extra money from them, is, you know, it's like, we need them, we want them, we want them to stay. So maybe we should treat them differently.
Well, yeah, but the extra money is used.
But it's not that much extra money. You're just talking about the barn, $6.
No, no.
Are you kidding me? You're gonna pinch somebody for $6? You know, anyway, as far as the marina goes, I mean, that is a winner winner moneymaker. You know, he leases that place, he gives Hy-Sid 80% of the slip rentals, he pays a 3% going to purchase tax that he runs through his computer. We get a report every month from him on that, I'm good friends with Colin, okay? Anyway, I just think that the guests, it sounds to me like we're trying to like squeeze every little penny out of it, okay?
Have you gone to any of the locations like Eureka and all these other places?
I'm intimate with Eureka Springs.
Right, and their taxes or air and P tax is encouraging them to promote. Now, I don't wanna get into the city.
Yeah, but they have over a million dollar advertising, and look at the condition that their group is in right now.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, as an example, any city, okay, Bentonville, Bella Vista and all that, they have the AMP and they've grown. So our thinking.
Oh, I agree with you, with your thinking and where you wanna go. In fact, I've already heard about you. I hear you're the Wonder Woman, you're gonna get us over the top. No, I've heard so many good things about you already and I haven't even met you, okay? One of the things that I have, and I'm gonna poke the bear with this, because I'm going to the meeting at 6 o'clock, to poke the bear again on this, okay? One of the things I think that we should take a look at are some of the things like this here, okay? They wanna do some zoning changing tonight.
Yes.
To take from R1 to R3 on the crown jewel of the island. Those lots going right up on the island, okay? Where's our code enforcement?
This city's right there.
Okay, so look at that shack on State Line Road, right? We've got a shack down here on State Line Road, less than an eighth of a mile from that sign. It says, welcome to Holiday Island.
We have to talk with the city and the code enforcement and we understand what you're saying.
Well, I'm just saying, you're all upper echelon in the city and you're here running your meetings in town hall. So you're influential people, and I'm trying to persuade you and the influential is that, you know, what do we, I mean, planning and zoning. Back my truck up into that thing, and there are three new homes right across from a storage unit. Isn't that a wonderful place to build homes? Right?
I see what you're saying.
You know, do you want this at the entrance of the island? It's a nice little place, serves purpose, it's good local housing for people, where it is is fine. But do you want that driving up to the entrance of?
So what are you gonna suggest?
I'm gonna suggest that we do not change the zoning from R1 to R3. So I'm gonna vote, if there's voting, I don't know if we'd be voting.
Well, the planning commission starts at 6 with a different group of people.
It would be a different group of people.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I understand. But you folks are influential. You know those folks, right? I mean, you're not arch enemies with them, no. I mean, we already got the Hatfields and the McCoys going on with Hy-Sid and the city, right? And they're just now starting to realize that they need each other more than they originally thought, okay? So my idea is, if you're looking to advertise and promote Holiday Island, it might help cleaning up some of these eyesores and, you know, being on top of zoning. You know, I mean, you know, the Bonanza's over here, two bags are already pulled out, right? I mean, the Bonanza's long gone from Holiday Island, it's over. But back in the day, 40 years ago, when you got two banks, you got Tom Dees running all around the place selling properties left and right, you know? And now, you know, I mean, I have friends that I know in town who will say things to me like, it's a shame what happened to Holiday Island. And it kinda is, you know? I mean, Dollar Store usually denotes a downturn. You've got Sunfest, and how did Dollar Store ever get there? Who ever let a Dollar Store in there?
It's France, right? And France was a Dollar Store. France was a Dollar Store. It's been, it was there forever.
But it wasn't this brand Dollar Store, it was a real, anyway, that's all I wanna prevent.
We thank you for your comments, and I think what you said is important.
It is important, I mean, if you wanna, I've been in sales and marketing my entire life. And I've been at big corporations, Caterpillar, nobody markets like Caterpillar, right? And I've seen how.
Where are you from?
Marketing, from the northeast, upstate New York.
Okay, 'cause I'm from Peoria, my granddad was this nice resident.
Yeah, there you go.
So, I mean, I grew up in, Peoria's a factory town.
I've been there, I've worked for the largest Caterpillar dealer in New York.
His home office is right down to.
I understand, I've been in their proving grounds down in Arizona, anyway.
With your marketing, would you please take these and talk to your next meeting and encourage them to support what we're trying to do?
You know, I would like to see the, you know, Holiday Island come back just as much as anybody else, I've got two properties on the island. But when I hear people wanting to change zoning to put multifamily housing, you know, because it was already voted down by Hy-Sid.
I remember that.
Way back when.
Yes, right. Thank you, I appreciate you.
That's all I needed, thanks for the extra time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next meeting is the one you wanna go to.
That's my plan, sir.
I don't, that's really what I made, we're only allowed to talk once. We're only allowed to talk once.
I'm not doing anything.
Okay.
I just told you what I thought.
Thanks, Ken.
Just to get back to the formal requests.
I know we've got another item on it, it's been down about a clock, so what I'm saying is I appreciate you all listening to me. I have maybe the depths about some of that thing, some of those things. But I felt I wanted to get you to convince me, and I appreciate the audience and council members and the other citizens who are here. I think I can go forward and try to push this and pass it with what we've got right here, right in the middle. That's all that we're gonna talk about. There's no other things in the ballot box that this paragraph right here. And if we're honest with people, and I think we are, I don't know anybody in this room that's not honest, that we can go forward and say that we're gonna make it work and we need to promote, we need to promote. And we don't have the money that Bella Vista has, we don't have 30,000 people either, we have 3,000, 2300, whatever. But we can do it, and Tom Dees did it, you know, he did it back 40 years ago and made a lot of money and he did a lot of good. But we've got a, I was one of the drivers who used to go over and get the people and come here to see places and buy them.
I know a lot of our likes.
At our free out.
I need to clear a lot for Tom.
But anyway, sure, I would be willing to just move on and the vote was taken, it was 6-0.
7-0. And I wanna add something to that real quick on that question, and this question comes up because it's, it's in place whether we come to the fact that that law, the way that it states, does tax those locations. I looked up the previous years of the Sid, and this has been a question of how much would it be and would it be very much? And we have it targeted 160,000 to 200,000 dollars a year through the short-term rentals of Airbnbs and VRBOs, of tourists that are coming here to participate. And looking at the financials from the past of these types of short-term rentals in the Sid, we're talking about a tax amount less than $1,000, somewhere in the $700 range, it is very small. And so the percentage of the total tax collected is less than 1%. We'll call it a half percent almost of tax collected. So it is still very minor in the part of the short-term rentals. But I think the biggest reason for airing this out and even talking about it is because it does in that part, the enforcement of that tax is very clear on enforcement of tax. Tax is not a choice in that part, it's something that is enforced by what it describes. And so that's a question that definitely needed to come up.
To that point, Bryce, if somebody mentioned having one person in charge of providing rent all of our facilities, we need that. And even though 300,000 is so tight and short right now, I think I'm gonna recommend that to our, we need a plan, we need like a three to five year plan, and we haven't had one ever, you got one. But we need a plan and it has to be a person that's skilled in doing that and will go out to really beat the bushes. And we can, you know, I won't go on, but everybody says we have the best facility up here with 80 car parking lot on level ground, stable.
Level ground, that's hard to find.
And we can do it, we can sell that place with the deck that was outside, it's just made for making money, it is. And it's not, Eureka, and I'm not criticizing Eureka, but, you know, they're like this, all of a sudden. But I think we can really do well with the city and Hy-Sid and the AMP working together, together, we go forward and do well.
And, you know, like I said, going back to the amount that would be collected in that, and this is the fear that I think has been brought up in this, is the people voting for this, afraid that it will be them being taxed in this part, we're asking the local voters to pass this thing. And really their part of it would be a very minute part of this. This is still a majority driven from outside traffic. When we look at the Sid of renting short-term rentals, in this case, it's less than $30,000. The real target that is being collected in this is the 5.5 million dollars of Airbnb rentals. There's a big difference between those two categories. And so, you know, seeing that that collection may happen in that part, it's a small, small part of that total collection and what happens from it, bringing more people in, more people coming to play golf at the Sid and use the facilities that are there, I think offsets that concern that I think would be in place.
What other comment that Mike could respond to this, and that is, I think we've got 143 permitted short-term rentals now. Is it 143?
I don't know.
Well, you're counting the 300 extra at Table Rock and the two that may be improved today.
It's either 146 or 148, somewhere in there, it's total rentable locations.
The reason I bring this up is at what point does it become too many and are we gonna rent all those and are we gonna?
The economics of those will fall apart. If they don't rent, they'll, in the long term, they'll sell to residents.
And I'm gonna say this, as a business that does that, it's almost at that capacity right now. It's almost at that point where it's a big supply.
It is, the market will figure it out.
Market will take care of that.
The analytics will take care of this.
We're not part of, we're, from this time last, or if they're down from this time two years ago. Where it's kinda beginning to balance itself out. It'll balance itself out. Ken, this is a user's tax, user only tax. If you don't use it, you don't pay it.
I'm just curious, how is this?
Yeah, Ben Hall, 113 Beaver Drive. How is this being promoted, like the verbiage, the PR on it, so it doesn't get across negatively like we're sitting here talking?
We're working on that too.
The next meeting of September 3rd will be like the final. We've got talking points, we've got some sketches are ready. We have Holiday Island Short-Term Rental Committee put together to collect the money to make that, and I've asked them to do a report.
Okay, sweet.
We start in September, in October with six different open meetings, barn at the pavilion and at the clubhouse. And if you have additional ideas for us, we can talk to the Holiday Island Short-Term Rental Tax Committee.
Okay, cool, yeah, I need to learn more about that, but, yeah, I was curious to see how it was being promoted with the verbiage and also it's not, and then I get a connotation.
You know, a short presentation and opening it up to questions so that people ask when they want to know and what they wanna know. And not too confusing.
Right, yeah, makes sense, thank you.
Well, thank you.
No motions on this, it continues on the path that we voted on last week.
Do we need to do anything?
It's already been passed, it would only be a most changes, so if it's not anything, then we'll move on to the next item. The next item is discussion on NHTA membership with the city. And that, Secretary, I'll let you take over NHTA and what it is and what's your.
Well, Lyndon Gray's been on the board for years.
What did you describe?
Northwest Arkansas Tourist Association, and it's a combination of about five, six different counties working together to bring people into Northwest Arkansas. And they've got online, they've got hard copy, traditional media type thing. And they've got money from the state that they also use in addition to the dues that are being paid. So there are multiple meetings to see how best to bring people to Northwest Arkansas. And this year they're doing it by theme, so it would be like cuisine and water or sports or action. So it would be, if you were a golfer, you would see everywhere in the Northwest Arkansas to golf, not just Bentonville or Bella Vista or whatever. So it's a real good consulting group. The people that are working with them are Madden Media, which is another one of the people that we've already looked at in our ad hoc committee, from billboards to digital, hard copy, et cetera. It's $2,500, and historically, the city has paid, sometimes Hy-Sid had paid. And I think we're recommending that we split it with the city, so the AMP would pay half and the city would pay half. And I've been asked to be on the board of it and with the meetings.
So we'd be 1250.
1250.
We'd be 1250.
Can I make a suggestion to them?
Yes.
They put a W in that, NHTA. I'm just joking.
Don't worry, when I looked at it the first time, I got all kinds of things, it wasn't that.
And they were, I said, she wants us to join, what?
Did Linda have anything more to add?
I said, would you, Google NHTA, you will not get Northwest Arkansas.
National Tennis, it was Tennis something, I got one of them.
There's also a National Athletic Trainers Association.
That would really threw me.
What did she ask, because I didn't know what it was, and I googled it and it, so it'd be nice if they put a W in it, that's not.
The neat thing about it is what Peggy mentioned, it is state funded too, besides the membership dues of the various city entities. The people that join this, and it's made up more than just the cities in the five counties. First of all, the whole state promotes tourism, it's a big thing in Arkansas. Every governor we've had has been a big proponent of tourism. And so they divided up the state into sections, so it's probably eight or 10, 12 sections. And then the counties in those sections have one of these mini tourism associations. And then they get state money every year. I'm not sure how that's sold out, it's probably just divided population wise or something like that.
And one of the options was like, we pay 3,000 and they give us 7,000.
Oh, yeah.
So you end up with a 10,000.
They don't give us, but we do joint advertising.
And if like the AMP wanted to do one particular thing, they would charge us 3,000, but they would match it with 7,000.
I'll just give you an example of some of the stuff they've done, the sites, the tourism guides and the website and all that. They had, and you've probably seen it, if you've gone through, it's still there. In going through Northwest Arkansas Airport, XNA, which I travel quite a bit through there. And if you're getting on the escalators, the escalator, the roving sidewalk, you know, going down to the gates for American, you'll pass by this glass plate on the wall with a big mural behind it. And the mural is scenes from every city in Northwest Arkansas that participates in the membership. And then it has the city names along the bottom. And for our measly little $2,500 a year, our name is right in the middle. So when you look at that picture, the first city name you see in the middle is Holiday Island, which I think was just, I mean, it just happened that way, but I was stunned the first time I saw it.
To add to that, when I looked up the part and started reading through it, the membership cost already includes the location, about $200,000 of advertising, just in the base part of that, is what they were explaining to it.
Oh, they put ads in like Chicago magazines, the tourism magazines and papers and stuff like that. A lot of magazines, you'll see ads that are placed by them, that we wouldn't have the money to buy those in a million years. You know, but by participating, they're advertising Northwest Arkansas, but it draws people to their materials, which features us as one of the places to go in Northwest Arkansas. So we benefit from it.
And then this year, these three cities that they really want to promote, because they feel we were underserved. And it was Silo, which is far, and Green Forest, which is afar, and Holiday Island. So they're really going to concentrate on, because they feel they haven't been promoting.
That's nice.
Yeah.
We don't disagree.
We don't disagree. And I'll tell you, I mean, the mayors were there at the meetings, and, you know, everybody that's anybody with Walton Foundation. So I'll get actually a chance to talk with them relating to something that we want, we might want to do.
Are we just discussing this thing, or do we actually make a motion?
We can make a motion that we'll prove...
Let me just point out one thing, just in fairness to everybody. I believe, once we start collecting AMP taxes, that membership might goes up to 5,000.
5,000, yeah.
But because we're a small city, we pay less than anybody else, so we get just as much benefit, really.
So for the year of 2024, which is a membership that's about to come due, I think the end of August is when they do the billing. It would be the end of August, and that would be 2,500 with the AMP tax not being passed yet.
Maybe 1250.
It would be 1250 for us, 2,500 total, we would be splitting with the city. And make it that joint venture on that, so.
I'll make a motion. Joint member, what, how do we want to make the motion, that we become a member?
We are a member, so we, I would think you'd want to say...
We would continue the membership jointly with the city.
Membership's kind of been the generic name of Holiday Island.
Yeah.
So you made the motion for it.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Brown, second that. Secretary, you want to do real quick on that?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Chairman Law?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
They got disconnected, we lost her about 15, 20 minutes ago.
Secretary, Treasury, Loderworks, I have to refuse because I'm part of it. Commissioner Plumlee?
Aye.
Commissioner Struggans, Eske's absence. So Pat Plumlee passes.
Moving on to Commissioner comments, any commissioners, any extra comments?
Say it all, I want to say it.
There you go.
That's a first. That's why they put Mike on the other side. You can't swing and hit me, I'm sorry.
It wants to say something.
Secretary, the next two meetings, the dates are mature.
Okay, it would be under scheduling. September 3rd is a Tuesday, because September 2nd is Labor Day. So, 6 o'clock here. These are the AMP regular meetings, right?
August we've had, that was the fifth, right?
Yeah, we had it August the 5th, when it was in August, yes.
And then you have October 2nd, that's...
It would be October 7th, which would be the first Monday at 6:00 PM here.
Okay, thank you.
Our regular meetings are always 6:00 PM unless there's a special meeting or a workshop request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other Commissioner comments?
I would like to remind people, if I can find it, about the open meeting with the general public, just so they can put it on the calendar.
If you want to get those dates right there.
Yeah, I will, if I can find it. You have your...
I didn't, that's what I was looking for, I was going to give it to...
Yeah.
You never asked earlier, but I didn't, I didn't put one off.
I had, I had, okay. September 19th at 5:00 PM at the AMP at the Pavilion, on a Thursday. And then we have on October 8th at the Ballroom at 5:30. And October 21st, 6:00 PM at the Ballroom. And October 24th at the Ballroom at 6:00 PM.
We left out, we had one at the barn, I thought.
Yeah, I don't remember where that is.
I thought it was, I don't have that, it's dead, I forgot to bring it.
Okay, well, I thought I had it, but...
So our next meeting, we're going to talk more specifically about who's going to speak and what the...
Yes, and I now have the exact dates, and I've invited our other committee, Holiday Island Short-Term Rentals Committee, to make a report, to kind of fill us in what they're doing, and what they'd like to hand out, et cetera.
So they'll have the handouts and maybe a couple of signs, and hope...
I hope so, I've asked them to have that.
All right, any other Commissioner comments? Not, we'll move on to public comments, any other public comments?
Who wore them out, too?
Yep. We left for the online public comments, and there has not been any online, we've been waiting for those, so there aren't any there either. Scheduling, we don't have any scheduling, we already did it in the last meeting. No announcements in place, so...
I motion to adjourn.
Second. We got a first and a second, all in favor? Aye, I guess. There we go, we're good.
Now, you're all so quiet back there, what's the deal? You're not going to be quiet at the next meeting, are you?